It is 6:30 on May 26, 2021. This is the Ashland Planning Board meeting. Calling meeting to order. I need you to roll call first. Andy Fitch?
Present.
Kathleen DeWolf?
Present.
Paula Hancock?
Present.
And Martine Badger, present. Let's do... We're going to skip the minutes for right now. We'll do those later in the meeting. Okay. I'm going to move right into our guests. We have Mr. Paul Dan, Ms. Jan Williamson, and Mr. Luke Renaud. Are you all from NFI North?
Yes, we are. And by way of introduction, I'm the Executive Director of the agency.
Okay.
Jan is the Regional Director for New Hampshire Services, and Luke is our Chief Operating Officer.
Okay, all right. Thank you. We're here for just an informal consultation for 71 Main Street Tax Map Lot 16-12-1. And Paul Dan, why don't I... Why don't we go right to you? You can start it off.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you for this opportunity to have a chance to talk with the planning board in an informal way. We want to make sure we're clear about the steps we're taking going forward, and so we're very much appreciative of this. And as I said, I introduced my colleagues that are here. I'll do a little presentation, and then, you know, if I look stuck, then one of them will help me out. So how does that sound?
Teamwork.
We all do that.
You know, as I get older, I find I get stuck a little more often, but I think we'll be okay. So just by way of introduction, NFI North is a 30-year-old organization. We're coming up on it this year. We've been providing community residential services for people really since 1991. Even 1990, if you consider the children's shelter that we ran for many, many years. We're a well-respected organization. We're joint commission accredited, as you saw in my cover letter, which is the highest standard of accreditation. All of our operations meet state, local, and federal requirements for the services that we deliver. In this case, we are talking about an eight-bed residence for adults who are coming through the Bureau of Behavioral Health, who have had emotional or behavioral health challenges. And when we saw Ms. Peoples' property, we said to ourselves, wow. First of all, it was used as a bed and breakfast, and it's a place that was kind of set up to have groups of people living there. I even heard sometimes we got to 11 people visiting or staying, which is pretty cool. So it looked perfect for us in that regard. We feel that Ashland is a wonderful community, and it would be a great place for us to set up our community residence. Now, let me tell you a couple of things about us. In this effort, we will renovate to add a meat life safety code, so we will need to get local and fire marshal approval to put in a sprinkler system. So that's one of the changes that we will make. We'll also make sure that the building is handicap accessible, you know, because we're working with people that have some level of disability. We have a requirement to make sure, folks, if someone needs a wheelchair to get in or out, or if they need a handicap acceptable bathroom, that that's available to them. So we're going to make some changes. We anticipate making these changes to the property. We are not changing the footprint. So the idea is that, in fact, for the type of use, the way we would look at it is essentially as a residential use. In fact, what's interesting in Maine, all of our programs are considered single-family use because of the way the laws are structured there, because we always have fewer than eight. So we keep it small. I don't know about you, but, you know, the Cubans who live down the street from me had nine kids, you know. So there's, you know, this is... And the Pat of Vantos on the other side, they had eight. So, you know, think of it in a way like a large family. Now, there are some differences, though. We use what's called a professional staff model. If you had a chance to read the Manchester Minutes, I apologize if I'm repeating myself, but it's worth it for the record. We use what's called a professional staff model, which means that we will have a certain number of staff there during the day, evening, and overnights. And during the overnights, we have two staff. These are staff that are trained to be supportive counselors and direct care workers with the people that we serve. So they're awake. They're not, you know, it's not a sleep-in, live-in kind of model. Like, in the old days, some group homes would have house parents, and that's how they managed things. We don't do that. We have a group of staff. What that does mean is that there will be some people coming and going, you know, in terms of shift work. But we've got the parking for that. We envision, you know, having two vans to help move our residents around if they want to go to an appointment, or if we're going on an outing together. Incidentally, we've been doing less of that because of COVID, but, you know, as things lighten up, we expect we will. So we'll have two vans parked there, and five to six cars from staff, you know, on a busy time during the day. Now, all of the participants will be working toward moving into their own home and their own community. So oftentimes, the question is, well, where do they, you know, where are they going, and where do they come from? Well, priority is given for people from the Ashland area, this part of New Hampshire. That's number one priority. And then, if there aren't people from there, there are people that might come from other communities. But they always move on to their community of choice. Again, these are adults. They have rights to live where they want to live. In addition, they all have disabilities, which give them some additional rights in the world, which I think they should have. So there, we work with them to help them move successfully into the next phase. Length of stay is, our average length of stay right now is 14 months. The state asks us to, if we're going to go beyond two years, to work with them. It can happen. Someone could stay longer because of whatever they're working on. It might take them more time. For example, to develop some job skills, or to learn how to cook and manage a household, and things like that. We have a case management staff that work with folks, and we have therapists. So we provide some supportive counseling and treatment groups, things like that. It's honestly, it's, I wouldn't invite you anytime to come and see any of our programs, because it's quite remarkable to see, first of all, how people work together as a community. Secondly, how they become an important part of their community. So, for example, in Bradford, they volunteer at the senior center. The folks at the transfer station love our folks because they have volunteered, you know, they're working on developing job skills and habits like that. So they work at the transfer station. I think we've gotten award for cleaning the highway down there. You know, just nice things like that, but also helping neighbors out. You know, we have one program in Bethlehem, New Hampshire, which is very well-respected for their work with the volunteer work with the food pantry. But also, six of those folks are now working, and at some point, they'll be moving into their own home in the community. One other thing just to mention, we are in the human service space or field. We are one of the premier employers. We were voted best place to work in New Hampshire to Maine over multiple times. I think Maine's got it a few more times, Jan, so you better watch out, you know, because they're... But so, so one of the things that we've been very much appreciated for in our smaller communities that we live in is that we give jobs to people. And these are jobs where people can have a career and grow and develop. In fact, I started as a direct care counselor, I'll tell you, 41 years ago, in a parent organization. So there's a path for everybody who wants it within the organization. So what would help us tonight is to hear exactly what the planning board would expect from a site plan perspective. I imagine, you know, the notifying of butters and having a formal meeting. And I imagine those things are on cue, but we're not going to... It's residential, so the plan is not to put up big... It's not like going to be a Walmart with big lights, and it's not going to be, we're not going to change the parking. We're not going to change the footprint. So there may be some things that you would suggest that we ask you about a waiver on in terms of the site plan. Now, having said that, we've engaged Keach Nordstrom Engineering Firm. I don't know if you've worked with them, but they're... I don't know so much about them, but I know their guy, Matt Peterson, works with us on these projects, is a great guy, and he can... But you'll see, we're very professional. We'll deliver for you what you need and what you ask. But we want to make sure that whatever we're doing isn't overboard, that it's reasonable.
Yeah. Have you looked at our town website under the planning board? There's, we've got several things on there. We've got site plan review regulations. There's the site plan review application and so on. The site plan review, let me see if I can... Let's just go through that for a minute. Let me share something just a minute here.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Okay, this is the site plan review application. Fairly straightforward, probably similar to most any others. It does require a site plan, and I believe the present owner is in the process of having that property surveyed. I believe. It probably would be best that that be included, since I don't believe we have... In our files, it does not show that we've done any previous review of this property to any extent. So... And it's standard butters, a brief description, list of the butters. If you, any professionals that are involved in that preparation of the site plan property. Fee information is there. Some checkboxes, and if you have anyone other than the primary person speaking, representing this, when you come to a site plan review, there is a letter of authorization just to be able to identify that. Fairly straightforward. So that is one piece. The other piece there are the site plan review regulations. Is that visible right now?
Yes.
Also, okay, okay. There, in Article 2, there is a list of standards that we take a look at. Some would be applicable for your project, and some may not. We go through that in our discussion and in the public hearing.
Chairwoman Badger, in the past, what I've done is gone through and just responded to each of those from our... In other words, in there.
Sure, and that's, that's, that would be very helpful. That would be very helpful. Let's see. Other things you might want to take a look at. This is the planning board page on our town website. Other things that are here that you might want to review, building regulations. And most of... There, we do have the Code Enforcement Building Inspector. He's the one that handles all of your building permits, building, electrical, plumbing, any of those types of things would be. And he also has a separate page on the website for that, for his contact information. Other planning board members, comments?
I thought, you know, the minutes from, it was Manchester, probably answered most questions people would have. You gave a very good presentation. This property seems to be almost tailor-made for what you are, what you, you know, how you want to manage the property. You know, it's, it's, it's... With the housing crunch, trying to find, you know, places for people that could, that can benefit from your services must be extremely, extremely difficult.
It has been.
And these, these services are needed, and they should not be stigmatized. So I'm looking forward to seeing the site plan. And hopefully, it will be a very smooth process. Said, most of my, any questions I had seem to be either you explain them. You know, I wanted to know how many beds, the length of time. And personally, I had a family member that was in a group home. And now I notice it's called congregate living, which is, yes, whoever came up with that term, yeah, that's, that sounds nice. And they were in the residence for a year and a half, and it was also in a residential area in an old Victorian home. So, and that was during the 90s. So I'm aware of the need for these facilities, how they can be managed, and how they can basically blend in to the community. And, and some people may never know that these people just aren't living in, as, as a group in a residence.
Yeah, yes, thank you. I appreciate your comments. You know, what's true is, if we think about our own families, you know, my close cousin Martha was in the same type of facility. I mean, a lot of, a lot of us have family members that are struggling with these sorts of challenges. It's so important that we, that we normalize it, you know. I mean, if I had my appendix taken out, I could tell you all about it. You'd be like, oh, really? You know, we're always talking physical, but I think it's hard for people sometimes to talk about emotions, so I appreciate it.
That residence is in an area where the, the people can walk to restaurants, ice cream, you know, a little, you know, grocery store. I don't know if you've been there the past week, the sidewalk, all new sidewalks, handicap, accessible sidewalks have now been put in through the length of Main Street to the corner of Gordon, which is right where the grocery store is, where the Sherfine is. So that should, if anybody needs to use wheelchair or walker, hopefully that would be a benefit. And we have open space further down in the town, and we're very lucky that there's a lot of shopping and other businesses nearby in Plymouth that is basically not even five miles away. So it, the town is situated where it can, in an area where it can offer a lot for people.
And this is Jan Williamson, and we hope to offer you a lot, too, in the way of volunteer work or anything that people need. I mean, we're in communities where we're helping elderly people mow their lawns, stack their wood with that type of organization. So we're a helping organization, so we also give to the communities we're in, too.
We've noticed, as you can see, we have a very small board. Volunteer, we, you know, we're, people just aren't volunteering like they used to, so...
Right.
That would, that would be a benefit. There's a lot of aged people, you know, the town has quite a, quite a few people that are older than me. Though, the calendar tells me I'm approaching that, that age bracket very, very soon, but it's something we have to be mindful of.
Paula or Andy, comments, questions?
I have one comment. You don't get much older than Kathleen.
Oh, stop it. No, Marty's older than I am.
And this is recorded, too.
That's why he's saying that.
I have no comments at this time.
Just note, it is, that property is in the commercial zone, and it's a mixed commercial zone, allowing anywhere from stores and shops, offices, banks, lodging facilities, residential uses, including apartments. So there's quite a range, and that is right in the zoning ordinance, quite a range for that zone.
You aren't required to put any signage to identify.
No, in fact, we don't like to, because it's just, you know, imagine if someone put a sign on your house, said, this is your house.
Yeah. I guess that might be a question that might come up.
Yeah. I will, I'll include it in the information.
We'll just put what the town requires for the 911 numbers and all of that stuff.
Yes, yes. Your probably two best resources as you begin work on the property, obviously, will be Steve Heath, who is the fire chief. He can, he will handle all of the life safety questions and issues, a very valuable resource. I would recommend early contact with him. And the other person, Scott Vienn, who is our Building Inspector and Code Enforcement Officer. And their contact information are, both are on the town website under Fire Department and Building Inspector. What kind of timeline do you think you might be looking at, first of all, for the site plan application? Any ideas yet?
Well, we're going to try to move as quickly as possible. I know you have a 20-day requirement before, you know, in order to get in on time to do all the proper notifications. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to work from that. I understand you, it's really your first meeting is when you look at the formal applications?
Generally, yes, yes. Also, also on that page is a link to the planning board schedule. In fact, I've got it on the screen right now.
Oh, yeah, I see it.
Yeah, it's, we meet the first and the fourth Wednesdays. The schedule also indicates a submission deadline that, that is appropriate, giving enough time for the first meeting of the following month. So it will give you an idea there.
Yeah, that's great. So, you know, if, if I had things my way, and I don't always get them my way, we have it for you for June 16th, so we could make the deadline for the July 7th, if I'm reading correctly.
Okay, okay.
That, that's, if the stars are aligned, you know, we have site control now for a little while, and there's a lot of work to be done, but that's, that's what we'd be, that's what we'd be shooting for.
Okay, okay.
If not, it would have to go to the next one.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. But if you, any issues along the way, just contact the planning board email. And Susan McLeod, who is our land use assistant. If you've got any questions, she'll respond.
Yes, she's very responsive, but I've appreciated that, so that's been great.
Yeah, yeah. She used to be a member of the planning board until she moved out of town. So we are still tapping her expertise.
She's no longer a volunteer planning board member. Now she is an employee, getting paid for the work that she did as a volunteer.
Yeah, so that, that's smart, and also you want to avoid those, you know, where people live and where they serve questions. It's going to be pretty hard.
Right, right.
She has 10 years, I believe, of, I think it's 10 years of planning board experience.
Yeah, that's great.
Martine?
Yes.
Liz Peoples is trying to get your attention.
Okay, I'm sorry. Just a moment. I'm going to, okay. Go ahead, Liz. I'm sorry, I had, I had the screen minimized here.
Thank you, Martine. I just wanted to offer that the update for the survey for the, for the property is being conducted by Tony Randall, and it should be completed by June 5.
Oh, okay.
Be helpful to, and Jack, my understanding is they're planning to register it immediately with the state, unless there's any issue with it, but we anticipate, it seems pretty straightforward in their eyes. So we'll, we'll do our best to, to produce that for you and for the buyers.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I think I, as I said, if you do have any questions, in the meantime, contact Susan through the planning board email. The, obviously, your next step will be the site plan review application, and then we'll go through that process.
Well, thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I'm glad we didn't lose power.
No. Looking forward to hearing the next step. Okay.
Thank you so much. We'll see you.
Nice seeing you online.
Okay, thank you, Liz.
All right, thank you. Bye, guys.
Okay, let's go back into the minutes now.
I'll make a motion that we accept the draft minutes as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
I'll second. Let Andy second.
All right, I got two of them.
That must mean we don't have to take a vote.
Well, that's true. There's a majority, but we will. Andy?
Aye.
Kathleen?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
And Martine, aye. Okay, approved. Okay. I think think that proposal will probably be fairly straightforward when it comes through, one we just listened to. So, okay. Next.
They don't run through this process before, so...
Yes, more than once, yes. So I think that's helpful. Okay. There is, let me just close a couple of things here. Find the right. Okay, on the screen, I'm going to share... Paula, you're just on the phone tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
But I can, but I can envision what you're doing, so don't let that stop you.
All right. Did everybody get a printed copy of a draft letter about new businesses?
Yes.
Okay, okay. A little background on this. A while ago, we created a draft letter to send out to people with home occupations as though, as we became aware of one. We have a letter that we could send out just alerting them to the process and so on.
That's what that was. I said, I've seen this before. That's...
Yes, but, so that we've, we've done, and I think we've used it once or twice, I believe. And it did, we did get a response.
The response that we were, we were hoping for.
And it was, and it worked very well.
Yeah.
Um, this one, and I know we've all seen a few new businesses around town, various places. I'm not going to go into detail, but we all know some new businesses that have opened up or moved into a building previously owned by a different business and so on. So we, they need to go through a process in our site plan process. And sometimes, if it's a minor change, for instance, there's one bit, one property owner in town who has the couple small business places within his building, and every so often, one of those tenants change. So something like that, where there is very little change, it's just a new tenant coming in. We do double-check, is there going to be any major changes in the facility or traffic or anything? But for a lot of those, we can use the waiver of a site plan review, kind of shortens the process. Others, we may be in a situation where there's a building that's been purchased by, by a new business. We've had no probably little, if any, previous probably little, if any, previous dealings with that particular piece of property. And we don't know what is going to, really what type of business is in there. Are they going to be making major changes? Building expansion or different level of traffic. So some of those may have to go through a full site plan review. But a lot of them would go through and maybe an abbreviated process. But we need to alert those people that they do need to come forward and meet with us. At least come talk to us in an informal conversation like we just had. So we've been kind of tossing around the idea of having a letter that we could send out to those people. So this is Susan put this together from a couple of other things we've done. And it is a rough draft. What I thought we'd do is not necessarily finalize changes on it tonight, but any suggestions that people have. Should we or shouldn't we? What should we say? What should we not say? So this is just something to begin to bounce some ideas off of.
In many ways, Susan and I think alike. I just, I like to present the facts. I'm I don't think we need a warm and fuzzy and flowery letter. We are a professional, we're trying to act in a very professional manner and these regulations are on the books. They have been voted on in majority of the case. And it's our duty to make sure that the audances are met. This alleviates the building inspector for having to do kind of like a knock on the door type thing. He could, he could leave the letter at the, at the business or attach it to their door in some way. I think we need to do it and I firmly believe the majority of the people, as we found with the home occupation, it's more of, oh, I didn't know I had to do that. By all means, you know, what do I need to do? So hopefully that, that is the outcome of providing this letter.
Andy, your reactions?
Yeah, I think this needs to be done. And in looking at this letter, I'm, I'm tickled with it. It tells them exactly what they have to do and why they have to do it. So, my recommendation is do it.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if we, we might add just one sentence that for them, for them to, to come talk to us about any proposal they have for their property. So that when they receive this letter, they, they know what rules and regulations they have. But what is the, what is the next step in the process now that I've gotten this letter? And just a, a simple, just a simple, come before the planning board of the scheduled meeting, the scheduled meetings are on the website.
Or that we put, please contact, you know, even PB, mail, call the land use assistant or call the building inspector for further information.
Yeah.
That is missing. That is, we want them to contact us.
Yes.
Yeah, there is in the middle, there's a sentence that starts out preliminary consultations. But it's, it's lost in the middle.
Yes.
It's kind of lost in the middle. Yeah. I might rearrange a few of these sentences or separate into short paragraphs, something.
Yeah, it's almost like a run on sentence in, in many ways.
Well, and, and this was just a, a quick draft.
But I, but I agree. I agree with Andy. This is the nuts and bolts of what we're trying to, to inform these business owners or this is what they need to do in order to comply with the rules and regulations of the town of Ashland.
Right, and, and.
We're not scary people.
No, and, and to your, Kathleen, you said something about not needing to be warm and fuzzy. I don't think, and I agree, we don't need to be warm and fuzzy, but I think we do need to be welcoming.
Yes.
Some, yeah.
The letter that had been provided from a town employee to me was just the opposite. It was
Right, yeah.
Boring. And that kind of took away from the whole, whole point of the letter. We, we need to have a conversation.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, we don't know, you know, we don't know who these business owners are or what they're planning to do. And, and like you said, in some instances, they might need screening. They might need to put up some sort of screening for their, their business or to make sure that, you know, they have proper access to the roadway and other small or maybe even might be considered mundane things. But I look at this as being proactive instead of reactive.
Yeah.
And maybe change the word diffuse to the word resolve.
Where is that?
In the last, in the last sentence.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Yeah. So we'll, we'll play with the, the wording a little bit and arrangement of this and we'll, at our next meeting, maybe we'll have an, an updated draft.
Sure.
So if anybody has any suggestions in the meantime, just send them to the email. And we'll take a look at that.
Okay.
And I think we've probably, all, all of us have got a couple of places in mind.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. One other thing. Okay. Okay. Farm inspection report. Yeah, I have that on the screen now. Did that? Did Susan send that out to everybody? I don't know if she did.
Yes, I got it.
Did you?
Well, okay, yeah, it's, it was, yes.
Believe I got it.
It wasn't.
I got it either.
No, it wasn't in the package, but it was, I received the.
Okay, okay.
I haven't seen it.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I'll just kind of summarize what it says. On May 20th, Scott and Scott Vien and Steve Heath went to the Farnham business for an inspection. And based on the conditions that we had in our notice of decision. So their findings were as follows, and I'll just read it. It's not too long. First point they made was that all automobile parts, materials and equipment considered as part of a motor vehicle salvage or automotive recycling business were not removed from the premises. A plan was not submitted to the planning board and building inspector outlining containment and remediation spillage of hazardous substances. Third bullet point, there was an open electrical panel. Fourth point, there was no plan to address the safety issues cited in the inspection report by the Department of Fire Safety. There is, there is no fire suppression system. The sprinkler system is not working. There were no fire extinguishers in working order or up to date. And the last bullet point was no state DES permits were obtained for the towing business in that location. So that's the report. I'll make sure I send that out in an email to everybody so they can look it over. So that's the report. And I don't know whether Steve Heath himself will have a separate report or if this was the conclusion of both of them together. I will have to check on that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. So I think the next thing probably will be determination whether a cease and desist order is needed. And I think what we will probably do is send this on to the town manager and select board for determination on that and action. So that's where we stand on that. Okay. So I have not spoken to Scott or Steve directly. I have just this written report. So we'll follow up on that process. And I've only got one other thing. Let's see, to find it. Okay. Okay, this is a letter, oops. This is a letter from LRPC, Lake Region Planning Commission. And I am one of the, Ashland is is able to have two commissioners on the planning commission. I am one of them and my term expires on Jan, on June 5th. I thought I had another year before my term. But we, we received a letter from LRPC for the planning board. The process is that the planning board nominates representatives to the planning commission. And then the select board appoints that person and then forwards that information to LRPC. So my term is up. I would like to continue.
So this is a reappointment.
Reappointment, yes.
Well, for Pearlac, I had to fill out the application and then check off reappointment. And then I, I gave it to the interim town manager to present to the select board.
Yeah, yeah. No, there's nothing that I need to fill out. It just.
Trying to remember how this happened the first go around. We just.
It takes an, it takes a nomination from the planning board, which is then forward, then forwarded to the select board and the select board approves the appointment.
And then I guess Charlie must have just sent on the, the vote or maybe the minutes.
The minutes, probably the minutes. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So the David Toth has been the other commissioner from Ashland. I don't know whether he is going to renew.
Yeah, that's right.
I don't think he's going to extend, so we will need another representative from Ashland to the Lake Region Planning Commission. And it's, as I said, the planning board for both positions is the one that nominates the representatives. They don't have to be members of the planning board. Can be another, another official or elected or appointed official of the.
Yeah, we have not done well with this group halfway with getting active.
Yes, oh.
No, other than you and David. You went through a period where, yes. Oh, I'm, it's all, Cheryl, Cheryl did.
Cheryl Cox, yes, yes.
Before that, it was a struggle.
Yes. To get people to go. Yes, so I will put this on the agenda for our meeting next, when, our next meeting is next Wednesday.
Okay.
I will put this on the agenda for our next meeting.
Do we have to wait till next Wednesday?
Yeah.
Why not take care of it?
Don't have to.
I, I know.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll make a motion that Martine Badger be reappointed to this position.
Nominated. We nominated.
Okay. Okay.
I'll second, I'll second that.
All right. Roll call vote. Andy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Kathleen?
Aye.
And I'll abstain. I don't like voting for myself. I will accept it, so. I will accept it.
So with that.
I have found it.
We would send it to the to the town manager to present to the board of selection, uh, minutes reflecting we nominated you and we voted. And the next step is
Yeah.
For them to send it on to LRPC.
Yes. In the meantime, if anybody has any ideas for someone else that would be interested in.
Morning.
It's, it's, we I know it's, it's as just a commissioner, it's one meeting a month, but not through the summer. We don't, we don't meet during the summertime. So it's about, I think about about eight meetings a, a year. One meeting a month for the commissioners generally have a guest presenter. We've had a lot of good presentations lately dealing anywhere from housing to environment, a lot of planning issues. But it's, it's a, it's a very good group. It cover, it's the whole Lakes, we cover the, pretty much the whole Lakes, Lakes region.
We can see in the bottom, all the towns that are.
Yes, yes, yes. And Plymouth has just moved to this group. They were in.
They were in North Country.
Yeah, yeah, they just moved, moved over to this one.
Yep, Pearlac, we have a couple of towns that are still with North Country and we had a little discussion about that last night as far as budgeting.
Right, yeah.
That they are not included in the LRPC, which basically is the what's the word I'm looking for? We have a, a representative from LRPC usually attending our meetings.
Yes, well, the Pearlac group comes under the, the regional planning group.
Yeah, but we have two towns that don't contribute to the budget.
And, yeah.
So how does that, you know, so that, that's what the discussion was.
Yeah, okay, okay. So if anyone in the meantime has any ideas for a second person.
Yes, Martine, I, I won't hesitate to, to contact you.
I don't have any other business. Just a reminder that next week's meeting is a four o'clock site visit to the property on Winter Street. And then our meeting at 6:30 and the primary agenda item is the public hearing for their application.
Oh, I, I've got something.
Okay.
That we might have to consider in the future, campgrounds. Since we've had an interest in the community for somebody to have a campground, we have very, very little other than state ordinances to work from. Plus, the town of Ashland is the owner of a campground and the, we need to be cognizant that there are regulation, state regulations that the town of Ashland must follow with having a campground. So might be hopefully it would not take the effort that we had to put in with our excavation ordinance. But we need, we have very, very little guidelines to go by other than the state regs. Susan provided me, I don't know if she gave them to anybody else. It's tie, it's after 216 dash I on recreational campgrounds and camping parks. And these are the state statutes. And I was a little surprised. They actually specify the amount of area per campsite that you need to follow. And I don't believe that is being done in the town, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, like we said, we have, we have. Yeah, like we said, we have, we have very little for regular, uh, local regulations and I, I don't want us to be caught with very little to work at in case we do have, uh, an application that comes in front of us.
Okay, okay. Any other, um, in general topics that we may need to do a little research on ahead of any?
I mean, Susan, Susan started this, this is why, and I happened to be at the office, um, when the person came up and asked for some, uh, information. And we did kind of say, hmm, we have, you know, um, she provided them with the, our, the state statutes. And it was asked, well, what about the town? And, yeah, hmm, we.
Okay.
Other than the overlay, the Pemi overlay area, we, on, on the town level, we have very little uh, ordinances concerning
Yeah.
recreational campgrounds and camping parks.
Yeah.
And because
Okay.
We need something to, you know, keep us busy.
Uh, okay. Andy, anything else you have tonight?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, Paula, you have anything?
No, I'm all set too.
Okay, I'll, we'll get out a reminder about the site walk and the meeting for next week. As far as, you know, if, um, I don't, parking on Winter Street is not great. There is the, uh, parking lot at the Catholic Church, right on the other side of the street. If someone's not comfortable parking on the street, but we'll, I'll get some information out to people. Okay.
Well, that will be.
If there's nothing else, I will.
Interesting, no?
I will adjourn the meeting.